No, it was, I was saying Hollis Hills, so I didn't care. Excellent. Okay, I guess we have six o'clock.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to Planning Board. We can start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All devices off. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. One nation, one nation. Invisible with liberty and justice for all. Keep me on track. Okay, um, good evening. Is there, excuse me, any public comment? Do we have anybody in the waiting room?
We do not.
Is there any public comments? Seeing none. A and R plan, our first order of business is an A and R plan for 451 Mulpus Road Lot B3. Good evening, welcome.
The A and R plan is simply three lots that we're eliminating a lot line and making it into two lots. They're all owned by the same individual and they have a barn that's in the back of one of those lots that kind of straddles the lot line. So they're, they're fixing that by eliminating a lot line.
So this is nothing that's been before us recently?
No.
No. Does this show the old lot line or is that?
Yeah, there dash lines on there.
Okay, so this is, this is enlargement of a parcel though.
It's combination.
Yeah, I mean, you can see here, there's.
Surprise, surprise, right?
The skinny parcel and the larger parcel to the, to the east.
I have a kind of.
Okay.
Green are the old lot lines and the purple is what's being created.
Oh, okay.
So they're, each lot is receiving some of the third lot to create one, two, two larger lots.
Correct.
Okay, that sounds good to me. The B3 is still buildable?
Uh, it actually become, well, it would be buildable because it's pre-existing non-conforming most likely, but now it becomes more conforming.
Okay.
Because it has the, the required frontage. It had the lots width through the building in the rear and the frontage now makes it compliant because lot size is, is equivalent to what it would need to be.
Oh, so you're reducing us by one lot and you're making a non-conforming conforming?
Correct.
Beautiful. This is, almost never happens.
I can come back next week if you want.
Please, every week.
Yeah, a few different properties. Um, got a few I could list. Uh, any questions for the applicant? And just a reminder, we're really only looking at lot, frontage and, and, and area for A and R lots. Um, and like I said, this is very unusual. In a good way. If there's nothing further, I would accept a motion.
Yeah, uh, motion to, what do we do? Vote on?
Endorse.
Endorse, thank you. Uh, endorse the A and R plan for 451 Mulpus Road.
Excellent.
I'll second.
And a second. Um, any discussion about endorsement? Uh, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to take this with you tonight?
It's raining.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay.
We were not open tomorrow. Yes.
No.
That's fine. I mean, we'll be there Wednesday. Going to crinkle that mylar.
Okay, we have two appointments. Um, are both, both the people here for, are people here for both the appointments? We'll go in order then. Um, the proposed zoning bylaw change, new defined use self-storage.
Yeah, hello. From what I understand.
You can give us your name and address, just to start.
My name is Carl Venezia. Uh, you don't want my address? Is that what you said?
It's for the amendments, basically.
Oh, sure. Uh, 1402 Mass Ave, Lunenburg.
Very good.
Yeah. Looking to just add in the, I think it used to be an approved use of self-storage. And nothing had changed legally, but administratively, I believe that when the system was turned over, that use was removed from the system. So it was like no longer a dropdown and I'm just looking to add it back in to the dropdown. So that we can have self-storage as an approved use.
Sure. A little bit of clarity on this, Mr. Chair. Um, as you're aware, we do have a self-storage facility here in town over on Electric Ave. And that was approved back in 2016, uh, 2017 timeframe. And at the time, in the commercial district, there was a clause that allowed other uses similar to those permitted as determined by the building commissioner to be considered as of right. And at the time, the building commissioner determined that self-storage was a use similar to those that were permitted. In that same timeframe, the board was working on the use table. And in compiling the use table, I went through and compiled uses that were explicitly listed in the zoning bylaw as well as some that we were, we had determined were more contemporary uses that were happening more often that weren't listed. Uh, and at the time, self-storage was not discussed. The board didn't bring it up. It wasn't something that was on front of mind for me as a use to be listed. Uh, so it was omitted from the table and thus as a prohibited use. Uh, the gentleman in front of you, I believe it was your business partner who came to speak to me.
Yes.
Came in and said, oh, we've got a site. We'd really like to do this. I said, well, we don't have the ability to permit you to do that. We don't allow use farances. I said, you could certainly approach the planning board and inquire about whether they would sponsor an article or you could put an article on as, um, a citizen petition. Uh, so here we are this evening. I put together a draft recommendation of where it would be codified in the use table. And I put together three sample definitions for the board to review if you were at all interested in what, in entertaining an article. And that would allow you to, uh, vote to have me submit the article, which is due Monday. Uh, and the article is fairly simple. We could hold the public hearing in April. It wouldn't necessarily be problematic. Uh, and, you know, I think these are, some of these are uses I've borrowed from other communities and some are, are compiled from looking at other defined uses. They all say substantially similar, the same thing. You know, we all know what self-storage is. We all know the benefit that it, it can have. We all also know what it looks like. Uh, so that's sort of, I think, the genesis of this, this general discussion.
Okay. What do we have for questions, comments?
So, so this, this was an accepted use.
It was not a defined use. It was not explicit, self-storage was not explicitly written. But there was a clause that permitted the building commissioner to determine a use was similar enough to those uses permitted and give applicants or, or property owners the right to carry them forward. I will say that in the early part of the century, there were two properties in town that had both been approved for self-storage. Uh, neither of which were constructed. One of those being the former drive-in site where the Unitil headquarters is now located. Uh, and the other being the 691 Chase Road property, which is where Dan's paving tried to locate. This board approved a deck hockey facility there. Uh, it's little, it's around five acres, four and a half, five acres. It's next to the Subaru dealership, uh, and the, one of the town's large solar fields. It's, again, it's on Chase Road. So, I mean, it's not like it would be out of place. The board can't necessarily permit a use to happen only on one parcel. So it would be needing to place it within appropriate zoning districts, commercial, uh, and Office Park Industrial, I believe, are probably the two that where it would make sense. Uh, and you'll notice that in the, uh, tabular layout, I assigned it as a use to be allowed by special permit. And my thinking behind that is I don't know that self-storage is a use the town would necessarily be opposed to. I mean, we permitted it previously, uh, but I think based on the way that our commercial districts lay out and their proximity to residential neighborhoods, it's important to permit the zoning board to, uh, subjectively review each parcel and how a location of a use like this may impact abutting residents. And the one we, the, the one that's currently operational has hours that end at nine o'clock at night. So if you're a renter there and you get there at nine fifteen, the gate doesn't work. You can't get in and, and access your unit. Uh, some of that was voluntarily done at the owner's, uh, at, at the owner's wish, uh, mostly because he lives next door. But also there are residents on, on the rear as well. Uh, and I think he was trying to be sensitive to their, their needs. There are certainly places in town where one could put a self-storage facility and it could operate 24 hours without having any impact on, on any resident at all. So I think that is where I think the subjective review of each individual application would be important.
So among the numerous questions, I'm sure that would be valid here. The, the ones primarily that I'm seeing right now are the zone locations and the special permit granting authority. Should it be by right? Should it be by special permit? If it's special permit, should it be zoning board or should it be planning board? Um, is, can you speak to the difference between zoning board and the planning board special permits at all? I mean.
There, there isn't. I mean, it's just, who's the special permit granting authority? Uh, in general, in Lunenburg, for most uses, it would be the zoning board. I think that, um, non-medical cannabis is the only use special permit that the zoning, that the planning board issues with the exemption of like uses in the watershed protection district. And those, I think, one would look at less as a use special permit and more of a site preparation and site condition special permit because it's a matter of how what's being done there and the facilities associated with it would impact the underground aquifer. Uh, and so I think that that's not about, oh, is this an appropriate use in this location? As opposed to would this use in this location have a deleterious effect on drinking water, uh, at, at that spot? Uh, so, I mean, the special permit granting, the special permit statute in 40A, uh, defers in, in generalities to the zoning board, uh, but it does permit the, the select board and/or the planning board to also be a granting authority. Uh, so I think what we've done in this town is, and you'll, you may remember, Mr., Mr. Chair, when we did the use table and we looked at the Summer Street overlay, it was sort of an odd, uh, district because it assigned use special permits in different underlying zones to the planning board and zoning board independently. Uh, and in our discussion, we felt that it was important that the, the zoning board, uh, the board at the time felt the zoning board would be the appropriate board to assign all of those two. So there's a consistency in the individuals and the organization that's determining subjectively whether or not uses are appropriate for different locations. Uh, and so we unified the zoning board as the special permit granting authority for uses within the Summer Street overlay.
Super. Um, I think we also do the solar.
You do. That's correct.
They had, there had been a request by at least one of the members to take that as well, but that's neither here nor there. Question for you, the timing, um, is it imperative for you to get this, something that you can do before April?
We wouldn't start before April. We'd like to have as much known before April as possible, just because either we're going to go under contract or we're not.
Right. So this will be a deal breaker if it doesn't.
Yeah, essentially, yeah.
Well, the only, the only reason I can think of to put it off, well, for one is to get the verbiage correct. And then for two, to get the, a look at all the other, whether there are 20 other commercial uses? Is that why it's?
Yes.
Number 20?
That's correct. And then there's a series of heavy commercial uses, which are things that tend to be a bit more impactful. Auto repair, construction, sales and services, that kind of stuff.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, typically we, we try not to rush these things just before town meeting. Simply because of the, uh, the nature of rushing is you tend to overlook stuff sometimes. This is going to be permanent, well, I mean, as permanent as it is, you know, voted down next year. But it's going to be permanently in our bylaws as the description that we choose tonight, if we choose to do that. So I don't know how controversial a thing like this would be. Um, does anybody have, so there, there are three separate descriptions?
That's correct. I should have done a better job of, of indicating that they're separated, but the returns indicate separation between.
Um, I like, I mean, if we're talking about what we've got for things, like I prefer the third, uh, reading of it compared to the first two. Uh, the first one seems like very aggressively nailed down and the second one just seems a bit, um, not open, but not enough there to be, uh. Oh, I lost the word I was looking for.
I'm going to go with a little squishy.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And this is more like effectively, we are addressing an oversight in terms of what kind of uses we have in the town, not that there was a specific reason against it prior.
Yeah, I, I, I don't recall a specific reason against it. I don't remember any discussions and I, you know, I'll be honest. I didn't go back and read the minutes from that whole two-year process or watch all the videos. But it doesn't jump out to me as something that there was a targeted removal of.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, so, so my recollection on that was that we went from, uh, or generally accepted from the building commissioner, is that what it said?
Something to that effect.
To, to, to a table of uses and, and then we went on further to say that if it's not listed in the table of uses, it's not an allowed use. So we went from kind of squishy to more exclusive and I don't think this is the first time we've been asked to add something.
Hmm, I don't think it is.
But either way, and then as far as being, um, specific rather than squishy, it's, it comes down to enforcement and, and basically when, if it comes to a legal thing, then the lawyers tend to use squishy words against the authority. However, this being a special permit, it will be, um, it will be reviewed by the full board and they will have to have a, a, a two-thirds
True.
Approval.
So here we're defining what it is.
Correct.
And in the future, uh, it would come to us to be like, is this an acceptable use of that space or?
No. Uh, so what would happen is, let's say the board is like, yes, we think that this is a reasonable thing to add. And we think that the table is, is appropriate. We think it would be by special permit.
Sure.
We like definition three. And you say, Adam, go and do this. So I put together the warrant article. It goes to town meeting. Town meeting is tired at the end of Saturday and was like, just go away, planning board. Here's your zoning bylaw. Just let us end the meeting. And they approve it. So then it goes to the attorney general and then it goes into the, the zoning bylaw. Someone wants to do a self-storage, they apply to the zoning board and they say, I've got, you know, a parcel on Happy Street. I want to do self-storage. Zoning board looks at it and says, great, we think this is a perfectly reasonable use. Uh, they put their reasonable conditions on hours of operation.
Sure.
All that kind of stuff. Then it comes here for site plan approval. So this board is objectively reviewing the layout of the site to ensure that it meets the standards within the site plan approval bylaw for safe access, travel, stormwater, water sewer, all of that kind of stuff.
Right.
Uh, so in general, when something like this gets to this board, it's not whether or not it's an appropriate use. It's how that use sits on that site and interacts with the road and the surrounding parcels.
Okay, okay.
I think I'm sitting in the little kid's seat.
Your turn. So your vote was for the first definition? Is that correct?
I think the third.
The third.
The third was my, personally my preferred, uh, definition.
My concerns with the third would be, uh, we say, uh, a controlled access and fenced compound. Does self, does it need to be fenced? I can, I can envision a, um, an entirely self-contained, climate-controlled building that may not need fencing, for example. And does saying it has to be fenced put a limit on it we don't need to put on people?
That's, that's completely fair. Um. Yes, it, I, I think, I think what you're saying is correct. Um. Without that, or it could say end or fenced.
A quick question about the first definition.
Mm-hmm.
When it says no commercial transactions permitted other than the rental of storage units, does that include like things that the, you might be selling that like people are going to need for their storage unit?
Boxes. Uh, and you know, we could actually dial that in. So it says no commercial transactions permitted other than the rental of storage units and goods associated with that.
Sure.
And then that would be the interpretation, the building commissioner, that boxes and tape and bubble wrap would be permitted. What I was trying to get at is people don't go and buy 70 boxes of baseball cards and 50 basketballs and then like, oh yeah, meet me at the self-storage. I'll sell you, you know, and they're dealing whatever wares they have out of the storage unit. Not that that would ever happen.
I have certainly not bought weight equipment out of a storage unit.
I don't think this would avoid that either.
You don't think that, well, that would be a commercial transaction, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but it's personal property. But yeah, possibly. I mean.
I mean, that was my sticking point for number one. If there can be adjustments there, like that's also a perfectly serviceable definition.
And, and there's nothing saying we can't take all three of these and make a new one.
Yeah.
So I will note that two of them had, say, a building or a group of buildings and the second one says just a building. And then I was going to mention the no commercial transactions. And then the second one, a building used for the storage of personal property where individual owners control individual storage spaces. So they're not purchasing them. And does that imply purchase?
Yeah, I, I just pulled that one because it looked like the least wordy one. And I know sometimes people are like, oh, zoning shouldn't have lots of words in it.
That's my favorite.
So I wanted to give you guys an, an option.
So that was my favorite, but I just wanted to question the owner's word.
And I guess owners should probably be altered to say individual tenants or customers or something to that effect.
Lesses, yeah. Would be lesses?
Probably.
Is there a business model that doesn't use leasing? Like I, I don't.
Condo containers?
Storage unit condos? That, that's where I was going, like.
Not that I'm aware of, but I also don't live in the self-storage business space. And I often find that I think things logically wouldn't happen and they happen all the time.
Well, we have, we have someone in front of us who at least theoretically spends some time trying to live in the, uh, self-storage space.
Have you, have you seen this?
No.
Take a look at that and see if any one of those three would.
But to answer your question, there would be always a rental agreement of some sort. So I don't know if it would technically be a lease, but certainly they are renters.
So, so you're not aware of any businesses that perform it with more of a, a condo style where you own the unit but are paying for a maintenance fee?
Only if it's part of a fixed building where you have an apartment and then you also have a storage unit with it, but that would be separate.
Very good. Thank you.
So we could just say lessee or controller of the unit.
Yeah, I, I'd like that actually.
Yeah.
Um, and I like the building or a group of buildings because there's no reason it be, being a town with space, it's not necessarily like in a city where you're going to be
Right.
One building and that's it.
I guess my question to that would be if, if it's not listed multiple buildings, it's not exclusive of the possibility of being multiple buildings, is it?
Guess that would be up to the building commissioner to determine.
Oh.
I mean, like, it says a building, so one would lean towards the monolithic climate-controlled structure.
So I would like to go with the inclusive because you typically get rows of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does it have to be a building?
Does it have to be what?
Does it have to be a building? I mean, it, what about effectively, um, we, we have the, the, we have the people going through the process for the, uh, the contractor condos. Um, and they, and they go, wait a minute, the, although they're not doing it separately.
You mean the outdoor storage?
Outdoor storage. Is that a model we should take into account as a possibility where it's just fenced in?
It would be more contractor yard.
I will say that that is up to the board. I would advise that if you get into outdoor pens for storage, you invite an unsightly condition.
I'm comfy with that.
And, you know, if, if, if one operates an indoor storage facility and you do something that's not climate-controlled. So the, the storage on Electric Ave has both climate-controlled and exterior units. You can't store vehicles there because the buildings don't have floor drains and they're not fire-rated or sprinkler-protected. If one wants to store vehicles there, then you have to go through a very expensive construction method installation of sprinklers or, or actually I think there is sprinklers there. I misspoke, but different types of sprinklers. And you have to put in floor drains and MDC traps. So you raise the level of what the cost is. And generally folks in this gentleman's position are going to say, uh-uh. And they put in their rental agreement, no vehicle storage, because it's just a giant environmental headache waiting for them just sitting in that old Corvette that somebody thought they were going to restore that's going to let go at some point. It's probably an IROC, not a Corvette at that point, because people will restore the Corvette. Uh, and so when you do it outdoors, there's none of those thresholds that are going to trigger that and force the property owner to say, yeah, yeah, you know, we don't want to do that. If it's just an outdoor pen, sure, throw that old car in there. Throw it up on some blocks. Storage, um, you paying me? Sure, great. So you, you sort of build in some potential protections.
You've convinced me that I don't want, really want outdoor storage, but.
Just as an aside, when Unitil, um, permitted their use, they had outdoor pool storage and we were very specific about that.
Okay. And their transformer storage too.
That's, that's actually what I, yeah, because they leak and stuff.
The septic ons will get you every time.
So did you, you looked them over? Did you have a preference or any comments on the?
The third one does seem very good. Uh, I think the idea about the fence makes a lot of sense to, or you had mentioned that, to kind of make sure that that isn't, though I think every storage unit I've seen has had a fence, it probably makes the most sense for the town to not have that be a requirement. But it's not too much to put up a fence and it does certainly keep it secure.
I think the, what I've noticed in storage over the years that I've permitted them is, excuse me, units with outdoor accessible are fenced.
Yeah.
If it's a climate-controlled building only, they're not always fenced.
Yeah, but they sometimes are also.
Sometimes, sometimes they are, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're not always. I know many, well, many years ago, uh, we permitted one and they had a, an onsite manager and it was in a much more urban location, but they didn't have a fence because there was no access. didn't have a fence, because there was no access to the units from outside.
You had to.
You had to, you know, punch your code in to get into the building.
Right.
And all of that, so it was, it looked cleaner and neater for them to not have the fence, it didn't look like they were, you know, a compound.
Yeah.
But when people can get into the unit from outside, usually that seems like a more secure way to do it.
I agree.
So, I, I would, if, if three was the way people wanted to go, I would just add an and slash or.
Yes.
Yeah. Is that like an and/or with a caveat that, like, if it's an outdoor storage unit, it is required, or, just, does it matter? Um, I mean, I think the difference is between like.
Because it's saying controlled access or fenced.
Yeah, okay.
So, you can't, how do you control access if, if there's exterior doors to the units? So, that kicks you to fence. If it's a building that has controlled access, you don't need a fence. There's nothing that says you can't put a fence.
Sure, yeah.
Could they make an argument that individual locks on the units control access?
Compound.
It does say.
It says a compound, so compound implies that it's the facility?
I think the idea of having that controlled access is that it's not just somebody who can go in and, you know, like, hang out and mess with a lock, like, you have to have your first.
And it also mentions controlled access stalls.
Yeah.
So, it doubles the controlled access for both the compound and the stall?
Oh, no, I see that, okay, yep, I see that, great.
So, I'll change my vote to three, with the caveat that we do and/or fenced.
Yeah. I'm happy with that.
And, again, this is getting into the nitpicky, but not wanting to screw things up for people trying to develop things in the town and make their lives harder. I've never seen a storage unit that doesn't have units of varying ex, variable size.
Yep.
Does the wording here mandate that, and do we care?
I suppose it depends on how you're reading it and how your unit is varying.
Put it this way. Uh, a building.
I'm also okay with people saying, Matt, you're reading too tight.
A building or group of buildings of a controlled access and/or fenced compound that contains compartmentalized and controlled access stalls or lockers.
And this one says customers not lesses or.
Of varying or the same size.
If we're saying varying or the same, I think we can just not mention, refer to size.
True. That's true. Yeah, I mean, size doesn't really matter.
Depends on who you ask.
For the, for the storage of consumers, customers' wares, goods or wares.
Yeah.
Yeah, are we good with that?
Yeah, I think I'm.
Do we wanna tell Adam to write that down, and then we'll vote on it at a town meeting?
I would, do, do we have to vote, do we have to vote on telling Adam to do that, or do we?
No, well.
Do we need a motion to tell Adam to do that?
It would, it would, it would, yes, it would memorialize it, I think, you would probably appreciate that.
Yeah.
I would move that, uh.
Well, I think, I think first we should get a full reading of.
Okay.
A building or group of buildings of a controlled access and/or fenced compound that contains compartmentalized and controlled access stalls or lockers for the storage of customers' goods or wares.
So, I just, to the last, to beat this dead horse, the group of buildings within a controlled access and/or fenced compound?
Group of buildings, a, a building or group of buildings of a controlled access and/or fenced compound.
If, if that English seems good with everybody else, I'll, I'll, I'll forget about it.
I'm fine with it myself.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's a group of, so if, if you did it one or the other, it would say, a building or a group of buildings of a controlled access compound that contains, so and/or of a fenced compound.
Okay, controlled access or fenced compound.
It's awkward because we have the two of them with the and/or jumped in there, but if you separate them, it's correct English, so it works.
Plus, the hyphen threw me off, but whatever.
Everybody loves a hyphen, especially in zoning.
All right, so I guess we're ready for that motion, if you wanna do it. Sounds good.
So, we're moving to Adam, write it up and submit for town meeting, is that what we're saying? I don't know the correct wording for this motion, would be my only.
Probably that we ask Adam to prepare a warrant article for the self-storage as.
Discussed.
As discussed, yeah. I would move that we, that the board vote to ask Adam to purport, to prepare a warrant article for self-storage as discussed.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. So now we all have to go and vote for it at a town meeting.
Sounds good, I'll be there.
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, our next appointment is with, well, for 360 Flat Hill Road, board discussion and vote on bonds. Do we need, do we wanna ask for, do you have a presentation, or?
We don't have a presentation. As far as I know, the engineer is talking about.
Okay, were you?
No, the discussion was, you need to request from the board if they'll accept bonds, and if that's something they're willing to do, and at the point that they say this is something we are willing to do, then we'll talk with the engineer about reviewing the estimates.
Okay, so, basically, this is picking up where we left off the last meeting by the tri-party agreement for, what was it, two, three bonds? Two.
Yes.
And, and it appears to be an inconsistency, internal inconsistency, that I'm not quite sure where the problem arose, did we?
Well, no, this is, this is completely separate from the other discussion that we had.
Is it?
The, this, this is 360 Flat Hill Road. This decision has the thirty conditions that the board established as standard conditions that include the completion of stormwater facilities prior to occupancy. The developer contacted me and said, listen, we wanna be able to sell our houses, we can't plant because it's February. We wanna put up a bond, and I said, well, I would need an estimate, and it would need to be detailed, and the board would have to determine that that was something that they were willing to do.
So, did they do that before they sold the other two lots, is my question?
The other two lots were completed prior to sale.
Totally self-sufficient with the stormwater and everything?
Correct. Their stormwater facilities and their rain gardens were installed and inspected.
Okay, because they were lots.
Correct. Because these are, these are the A&amp;Rs that have the rain gardens, the p-stone diaphragms, et cetera, that function independently. So, there's four lots now that they have put in the, my understanding is they've put in the p-stone diaphragms along the driveways, they've shaped and dug the rain gardens, but they're unable to plant the material because it is February, March, and we're gonna get a foot of snow in six hours.
Sounds reasonable, I suppose. Questions, comments?
So, I don't think that the board discussed or envisioned this as something that would be necessary when we wrote the original
Mm-hmm.
standard conditions. And, or inferred that individual developers of properties would look at it and say, oh, I have to do these things, here's how I'm gonna plan out my construction because I know I need to be able to do this. So, there isn't a specific procedure for this. In light of this discussion, I think it's probably something the board may want to review over the next few months about establishing procedure, and maybe altering the conditions to include some manner of mention of said procedure, but at this point, I think it's wholly at the discretion of the board whether you're willing to look at the conditions as they're written and accept the proposal put forth by the developer who's in front of you.
So, this isn't really settled well with me since we started doing them for individual lots that weren't part of a development, a condo association. This, this is taking a, a group of lots and putting individual owners in responsibility of portions of the drainage system, and, and certainly, some, some of them have been designed to be lot-specific and function totally within the lot, but not all the time. And also, my neighbor contacted me earlier today and brought up the deed reference. The, the deed for one of these lots that's already sold does, in fact, reference the stormwater permit.
It does.
That's all it does, is it says.
And again, I spoke to your, your neighbor, and I, it's something I need to speak with council about, and whether or not there is a more explicit way to include it.
Okay.
Because, quite frankly, I'm not aware of additional legal remedies for referencing things in the deed than to, to specifically cite back to the recorded decision.
When, when we were putting together the bylaw, and then later on when we tried to refine it, I was kinda thinking that it was gonna be verbiage on the deed that's similar to description of an easement. Because if you've got an easement, it typically doesn't refer you to some other document, it describes the easement on that lot on the deed, is that, isn't that correct?
It depends. A lot of deeds say just incorporate all appurtenances, deeds, encumbrances, easements, et cetera, on the lot. I've seen them often cited as the, like, the outline of the easement, or referring to the easement document by, by recorded record.
Okay. So, easements are legally binding thing, and I, I think this should also be somewhat of a legally binding thing. The, the thought process, as I recall, behind that was that when a developer sells to a person, sells a home, then it becomes private, and they may or may not understand what the requirements are for maintenance of said structures, and then they sell the home to somebody else, and that second somebody else has even less of an idea of, you know, and it may have been modified. I kinda think that there should be kinda something almost like an easement, that if these, if these begin to fail, then the town is going to need to step in and, and control what comes on of the right-of-way, or if it starts to impact a butters.
Well, no, if these things fail, the homeowner becomes responsible by incorporation of the, or by the, by the definition.
Okay.
By the, by the approval, the approval assigns it to all, to the applicant and all successors and interest.
Well, I mean, sure.
I, I understand what you're saying, you know, but.
I mean, I, I'm a stickler for details, and I tend, you know, if, if I'm making a three to five hundred thousand dollar investment, I'll probably read every damn page there is. But, I'm pretty sure that not everybody's like that. If there's just a reference to another document in your deeds, when you buy a new house, I can imagine.
Oh, people aren't gonna know how to find the new document.
No.
I mean, that, that's, no, I'm, I'm agreeing, I am agreeing with you. I would like to see.
But I'm not quite sure how.
Yeah.
We can arrive at that point.
And that's why I wanna, I wanna sit with council and, and sort of talk that idea out.
Very good.
And I think in these meetings, I've expressed a similar concern before about.
Yep.
About the, the stormwater maintenance and how much isn't going to get done with successive owners because they don't know.
And I mean, I've seen, I've seen lots on Mass Ave, I'm not gonna be specific, but there were drainage structures on their lots, and they've landscaped it since, and it's no longer there, there's no longer a swale there that transports water. It's just a nice, smooth lot that they can mow. So.
So.
So, the review engineer has not seen this?
He has not.
Okay.
Again, I didn't wanna expend the applicant's funds without the board being willing to entertain the idea of it. I mean, really, the, if the board accepts the idea of it, then it's a matter of just using the pre-established tri-party agreement the town council has already signed off on, and having our engineer review the proposed cost estimates for accuracy and, and inclusion based on each of the lots, and, and moving on from there.
So, there's some squishiness because we did this last meeting for the first time.
Mm-hmm.
And it was kind of a different situation.
Correct.
Because the conditions were a little bit different on this visit. So, we've done it, but we haven't necessarily done it entirely willingly, I think it was reactionary versus proactive. Would you agree with that?
I would. And I will note that in this instance, the developer did approach understanding that the condition was there and needed to be fulfilled, and was looking for a way to ensure that the work that they were performing was done, and that they were not trying to do something that violated that approval.
Quick question.
Yeah.
If the ground weren't currently frozen, what would be happening at the moment? Would it be the installation of?
It'd be the, it'd be plantings.
Yeah, okay.
And stabilization of the lot.
Okay.
Hydroseed or, or, I believe, this individual has been hydroseeding their lots, but it may be straw and, and other seed, but it's, it's final grading and, and plantings.
Okay.
The, the location of the plantings is shaped, I don't know if the media that's required for the rain gardens is installed yet. Practice in these instances is, the location of the rain gardens is used as a settling basin, because the, the lots are already being graded to that direction, so they'll shape and, and dig it out and line it with stone, use it as a settling basin, when it comes time to plant, they remove those stone, they place the gravel and other rain garden media, and then plant the plants and, and mulch and whatnot.
Okay. Okay.
And I believe all the, the.
The microphone.
Yeah, yeah.
The required soils and stuff are already in place.
Okay.
And the ones that are, that are formed.
So, can you tell us a little bit about these dates of serve? They're all four, one, twenty-three. I don't understand what their date of service.
I would have to infer that those would be the dates they're intending to perform the work, but I'll let the applicant speak.
So, this is in two weeks?
So, those are for two weeks. I, I am unaware, those are just quote, we, we're, we asked our, our landscaper to give us a quote on these lots, I don't believe that four, three is exactly when he is going to do the, the work. I don't know, I'm not sure why.
Okay.
Why he would have dated him four, three, but.
The applicant's engineer is joining.
Okay. And while he's joining, so, twenty-one, nineteen, seventy-one Watt Street, and the third, the fourth one is three sixty Flat Hill, which is the previous whole parcel.
Correct.
So, are these the three they wanna sell before the work is done, and this is covering the rest of it?
I would inquire there.
We would be looking to sell all of them, the, the closing, uh, well, actually, the, the people that are purchasing three sixty Flat Hill want to move their closing up to more the end of April. It's kind of fluid right now. What's that?
Which, which lot is three sixty Flat Hill?
Three sixty Flat Hill is lot one.
Okay, okay.
And so, I, I would guess they will not be fully landscaped all by the end of April because it, it takes at least midway through April before everything dries out enough to do your final landscaping.
And then it takes a few, what, a couple of months to establish?
I would expect if the board chooses to accept these, they would be held through the fall to allow for the growing season to determine the. the fall to allow for the growing season to determine the, the taking of vegetation.
And they'd still be subject to the conditions set forth in the approval?
Correct.
Okay.
Hi, Adam, it's Mark Elbag. I'm the design engineer. Sorry, I'm joining a little late. If there's any questions, I'm available.
I think, just to clarify for me, I think the part that I, I wasn't understanding here is this is work that needs to be done on the properties.
Correct.
But the sale of these properties is happening before the work is going to be completed.
I think the applicant is hoping to be able to convey the properties prior to the completion of the work.
Okay.
So what they would do is give us cash amounts equal to the value of the work plus 25%.
Sure.
To guarantee that it's done and at the time that it's done and we've determined that it's appropriately stabilized, they would be, the board would vote to return that to them.
Gotcha, okay.
And it would be held in a tri-party passbook account that is in the name of the applicant, but the planning board has the signatory too. So for tax purposes, they get all the tax benefit and liability. The town has all the control over removal of funds.
Okay. How often do bonds like this come back to bite us in the butt? With no, no unkindness or doubt cast on you in particular, I really mean this is a broad question. I just want to be, I want to be real clear about that.
We've been lucky here in Lunenburg where they have not been particularly troublesome. I think in my time here, we released the bond for Emerald Place, which frankly, I don't believe we ever should have held, but that's another story. The one that we did have that worked well for us was at the Stone Farm Estates. The board had $25,000 or $30,000. The trustees was in the, were in the process of taking ownership of the parcel from the developer. There were some items that they felt were not completed appropriately. Our engineer reviewed them and agreed that there was some work to be done. It was the developer's money and he rightly wanted it back. So he went in and completed those prior to the transfer of the property and was ultimately given his money back. The, so, bonds in, of themselves are potentially challenging. These, what, what the board's looking at here would be cash surety, which is the absolute best because it's like somebody handing you a $20 bill. You can walk down the street and you can spend it. Often, when developers build large developments and subdivisions, they will use surety bonds, which is like an IOU written on a gum wrapper. They're backed by companies that are, for all intents and purposes, insurance companies. And insurance companies don't make money by paying out. So in the event that a developer defaults on the work that needs to be done, claiming a surety bond can be very challenging. Oftentimes, those bonds are held in Wyoming or Idaho or Sheboygan and they don't have any connection to the Commonwealth or the towns within. So I generally advise the board that they require that the bond, that a sufficient style of bond be held by a AAA rated Massachusetts company. And often the developer will go, well, forget it, I'll just take the covenant. Covenants are usually used with subdivisions to hold lots and prevent the issuance of building permits in order to ensure work gets done. And that works really well. But then you get down to the end and there's fiddly stuff that you can't do while you're still driving big trucks and building this and doing that. And a lot of times people will do cash or some other sort of tri-party agreement with their financing bank where if they have financing for a $50 million development and the board's requiring a $3 million bond for a top coat and sidewalks and curbing, they'll actually be required to finance $53 million. And much like the passbook, although we don't have the cash in hand, the board has control over that last $3 million. Banks, they're also not super excited, give away their clients' money, but they're a little easier to deal with than some of these bonding companies. That was a really long answer to a short question.
It was, the best part about serving on this board is I can already understand how a process works and still learn so much more about it every time.
Excellent. So I guess you're looking for us to approve the idea of, of voting on this at the next meeting after they've been reviewed?
I'm looking at you to determine whether you as a board are comfortable accepting bonds for work to be done under a condition of your permit. I wouldn't presume to direct you which way you would like to go. I'm presenting to you that this was inquired of me. I laid out the process for the individual. He's followed the process and now the board needs to determine if that is something they're comfortable with.
So this is something we regularly do with subdivisions and other things?
Correct.
Did you say that this, this was specifically a cash bond or...
I would, I would expect it would be.
Okay.
The, the bond that the board approved at the last meeting was a cash bond. I had cashier's checks in my hand. The following day when you came and signed, I went that afternoon to the bank and set up the passbook accounts there with the banker. And so those are all secured, we have the funding, we have control over them. And when that work is done and stabilized, we'll work with the bank to release it. And I know in talking with the applicant these past weeks, he asked several times when he should bring the checks in. So I have to again infer that those will be cash bonds.
Sure.
I mean, my own feeling is...
That, that, yeah, I believe they will be cash bonds.
Out of your account, Mr. Elbag?
No, that's, I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant, but, you know, I know it's going to come up more and more, the stormwater process is relatively new and, you know, depending on the type of stormwater controls you use, you know, it's going to come up more and more, especially if a house is ready to close on the, on the front end of the winter season. You know, someone maybe need to bond something for, you know, close to six months if this were, say, November.
So it's, it's just another moving part to stormwater, which is, as has been said, it's already kind of a busy cumbersome thing?
Yeah, just, just, just another piece to add to all the headaches, I guess.
And I think that there's also other ways to look at it is if, if people are bonding the stormwater work and we're holding a bond and identifying that it's not functioning correctly or there are ancillary issues, the bond certainly becomes a carrot for negotiation at some point as, as the, the site matures.
It's easier to get compliance when you already have somebody's money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want to say it the simple way.
And I mean, looking at this personally, like that's, that's my position, it is much easier to get compliance from somebody like when you do already have their money. Yeah. I think that is the main thing that I see as like a mitigating factor of why I don't necessarily have an issue with it, is that if it's already being paid for upfront or bonded upfront, then you got to get it done, otherwise that money's gone. And nobody wants to leave that behind.
Can I, can I add that the people that are purchasing their houses, their bank is also holding that same exact money.
Okay.
Until the work is finished. So we're, we're getting, we're, we're on the hook two times for, for the meantime as a builder.
That's interesting. Thank you for that.
I think I am personally comfy with this. I mean, it seems, I get wanting to get people into the houses and I get the people who, there are people who are ready to buy the houses, who would like to finish that process. And I hate to hang them up longer. I have seen in my life so many instances of developers not really following through with what they're supposed to do afterwards. But again, there's the, that's why the bond exists. And again, that's the opposite of any judgment of view whatsoever, a very broad sampling in my life. I think I'm comfortable with it myself.
Okay, agreed.
I would agree.
Yeah, Tim?
Yeah.
All right, I guess we are comfy.
So I will have our engineer review this and we'll get back to you about getting that. Well, what I'll do is I'll drop the tri-parties, I'll send them over to you. You'll have to tell me what bank you guys work with?
We don't.
Okay.
I have a mattress.
Then I will talk with our treasurer collector about what bank we use and work on, on getting that set up. And they may want some information from you because the bank needs your tax information because it goes back onto Matson for, for the tax implications and the town becomes the signatory. So I'll, I'll get this all out and I'll send you or your dad an email with all the information.
All right.
So are we to expect this on the 27th?
I would believe so. When is your earliest proposed closing?
The earliest proposed closing is, the, actually, if they could close early, there is, there is one buyer that would like to close on, I believe, the 30th.
Okay.
Of this month. And then the next one is April 1st.
Okay. Then I will do my best. I would advise that you might be, will, you might want to inform them that there may be a delay to the second Tuesday in April. Ideally, that wouldn't happen, but I don't know what the moving parts are going to look like here.
Yeah.
We'll do it as quickly as we can.
I, I do know if it does get pushed beyond that, the, the buyers are, end up dealing with the rates going up and paying extra for rate locks.
Then we'll see what we can do. We don't want anyone to pay extra, but I've, I can't guarantee what the bank and the other stuff. So Wednesday, when we're back in the office, I'll, I'll work with the finance director to see what we can do.
All right.
Adam, one, sorry, quick question for you, Adam, through the chair. So are you proposing that everything has to get set up and then come back to the board for a vote for acceptance of the...
The board has, the board's the signatory.
Gotcha.
So they have to sign the tri-parties.
Okay. Is there any way to vote authorization to sign on behalf of the board? Just to avoid, you know, because a, a change in rate lock might be, might mean more than them just paying more, it might mean that they can't afford the sale anymore, the way the rates are going?
I don't know that there is. So I mean, we do meet on the 27th.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of me getting all the, the paperwork and stuff done and getting it over to Ken and having him get it done.
Okay. What was that date you said, Shane, the 30th?
I believe, yeah, they would, that one would like to close the 30th, that would be early. But the one that is set in stone, I believe, is...
Is April 1st.
Is April 1st, I think. Or it might be March 31st, I'm not sure. It's right there.
But e- either way, we'll meet on the 27th and ideally, everything would be signed then.
Okay, thank you, Adam.
And then just one, one more word on the March 27th meeting, that is the night of our caucus, so I intend to be out of here by seven, by 6:45. Does that sound about right?
Sure. Caucus never starts on time, but...
Regardless, you've got to, you've got to be nominated.
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
You're on the back end of the nominations anyway though, aren't you?
I'm sorry?
I mean, planning board is on the back end of the nominations.
Oh, okay.
I'm not saying that you should delay getting out of here, just...
Well, that's a discussion we're going to have later in this meeting to, to make a decision on what, how we're going to handle that. That was my initial thought anyways. But we won't be having a, a four-hour meeting on the 27th, just so you know. Okay. I guess, does everybody have the information they need?
I believe so.
Are we good?
We're good.
All right, there's no motion, there's no nothing?
Nope.
All right, very good. I appreciate you being proactive on that.
And just to clarify, I believe all those, all the quotes came out to the same number. The, the property that abuts this property, there's two lots there and then we finished two lots on this property. In the end, the landscapers have charged us $7,500 on every one of them. So if, in the event that you're, you're worried about one lot has a little more square footage and one, you know, he is, he is, he's held to basically a flat price on the rest of them that he's already completed to this point.
Okay. So where does the 25% work in? Is that on top of that though?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'd be $10,000 per lot.
Okay.
Well, not less, no, less than that. That's planer math, sorry.
Good enough.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elbag.
Thanks, Elbag. So...
Amanda, I have yours. I'm going to ask everybody else to take their sheets and fill it out using only the key so that we can keep them in the file. And what will happen is, so what we're doing is we interviewed the master plan consultants at the last meeting. Excuse me. Board asked their questions, they took in the presentations, and now we're ranking them. Because this is more than a price-based proposal, it is a qualified proposal. So as long as one firm is ranked higher than the others and they're within budget, we can choose the firm that we would like. And if they're over budget and we have another qualified bidder, they would get the contract. So based on the proposals they submitted, the presentations, interviews and questions, you would then use the materials outlined in, I thought they were here, oh, there. Could you pass these down? One per person? These are the selection criteria and this is how you determine what is highly advantageous, advantageous, not acceptable, or not advantageous and unacceptable. All three bidders were determined to be responsive in that they submitted packages that met all of the criteria. Do you want yours?
So can you tell us again what this is going to do?
So you'll rank each and let's say that the, you find that they're all highly advantageous for A. On B, they had, you have varying scores. On C, you have varying scores. On D, they, I'm sorry, C, they're all the same, D, they're different, and E, they're all the same. What you would do is if in the two categories where they differed, you had one that was highly advantageous in both, then that would be your number one choice. And you would justify that by saying, we found that they were the most responsive, we liked their plan the best, we're going to, we would like to select them and we would open their price proposal and... We're going to, we would like to select them, and we would open their price proposal and see where they were at. And if they were, if they were within budget and they were deemed to be the most advantageous respondent, that's who would get the contract. And they would do our master plan. If you find that two firms or all three firms end up scoring out the same, you could talk about which ones you felt you liked the best and go from there. If two firms are relatively equivalent, and maybe they have slight differences in the way that people have calced them out, then the board would have to determine which one they, they chose to go with. So it's, it's a, essentially a ranking system on how to choose the firm that you would like to award the contract to.
Rather than just making a choice.
We, we have to have a reason and a methodology for that choice. So that's why there is the selection criteria, because that's how your grading is, based on that selection criteria.
I don't think I have all these facts memorized, but.
Well, and I, you know, it's, it is somewhat subjective.
Well, some of these are not subjective, and I, I don't. But that's fine.
I, I have designed rubrics for a living for a long time. And this is not meant as critical. No, I, I completely understand.
Are we allowed to discuss, or are we filling this out silently?
My understanding is you can discuss.
All right.
So anybody that wants to has the floor.
I feel like the main thing I saw overall was Weston and Sampson and Over/Under, I liked that they had, it felt like, like more of a focus, or they spent more time focusing on community engagement, as opposed to just like, here are the things that we're going to be doing. Because that feels like the, the trickier or harder to nail down part is like, how do you get other people to care about this? And I think that's what I saw as kind of my main takeaway from the whole thing.
I liked, I liked Weston and Sampson's being, unless someone can convince me why this isn't a good idea. I liked that they were a one-stop shop with everything self-contained. So there's no, a- any newness of like, working with someone is entirely in-house, like I said, it can be dealt with in-house. That said, I really, really liked Over/Under's, I mean, they both gave good lip service to community involvement. It struck me that Over/Under seemed to have a more comprehensive and more creative plan for reaching out to people and getting them in. Weston and Sampson had a good way to reach out. I, I felt like Over/Under had better, may have had better ways of reaching out and then engaging with people once they're there. And that, that to me is super crucial, so that we don't have a master plan that just reflects, that only reflects the people who come to town meeting, who come to these board meetings and speak out anyway. Because that isn't our whole community, it's a very small subset thereof.
I think what you're seeing, and this is completely without judgment, is corporate versus boutique.
Yes.
So, yeah, and the follow along with that is, is my, my, what I will say about corporate versus boutique, you know, all one-stop shopping versus, you know, a grouping, is that one-stop shopping typically has done this before, they, they, they have boilerplates, they have, and you, you could have 30 hands involved in this, whereas in the boutique, you're going to have, you're not necessarily going to be limited by the number of people involved, who they ask questions and what their research involves. But it will be crafted by a handful of people rather than a multitude of people just putting together pieces and then the pieces being put together for us. And, and sometimes that's good and sometimes that's bad. I mean, if, if we were, if we were Fitchburg or Leominster, then I would think that that might be advantageous. Because once you reach that size in, in a state like this, then you're really not much different than one from another, in my opinion. But the one, the, the first thing that I was struck by is, is this is corporate and this is boutique. Okay, now Lunenburg, I don't think needs glossy, a whole bunch of words and, you know, I, I'd like to be able to use both sides of the paper. So I, I, I didn't, I didn't like that approach, I liked these two approaches. The boutique, it was interesting, because I believe that both of these groups were the first time for all of them working together on one project?
Yeah, I think, and Goldson was, Goldson Associates and Bob Mitchell. Bob Mitchell is an individual, he's, I mean, he's known, a very known quantity throughout planning in Massachusetts. That's it. I felt like you were looking for more.
Yeah.
I can give some opinion as well. I agree with the corporate versus boutique. However, I thought J.M. Goldson was not as impressive as Over/Under. They were very quick to mention the exact time we would be able to use them for. Maybe that's in all the proposals, how, you know, however many hours we get as a town to work with them. I don't know if they were as prepared as other, as the two other companies. I will say, I was, I was definitely impressed with Over/Under. I felt like they, even though they all three hadn't worked together, two had worked together, the other two had worked together, so it was really kind of just combining those two forces. Yeah, I agreed with the community outreach comments. I think that they had a lot of specific ideas that they tailored to whatever towns they were working with, which is important. I think Weston and Sampson had, I mean, they've been all over nearby, Fitchburg, Devens, Pepperell. So, you know, they know the area. I also think that they took a lot of notes like Over/Under did, they were, you know, every comment we would make, they would write it down and, which I thought was important, because they're already listening. But I do agree with the corporate thing, they said they had 800 employees or something, obviously not all in Massachusetts working for them. But I don't want Lunenburg to get lost in the shuffle of a larger company. So I'm wondering if the, the more boutique experience would be better for Lunenburg.
I liked that, uh, names. Weston and Sampson had worked with, seemingly worked with more local places. That said, when I looked at the towns mentioned by Over/Under, if I think it was them, if memory serves, they seemed slightly more reflective of the small-town nature that, of Lunenburg than, I mean, we are next, we are adjacent to Fitchburg. And, and that way, we share some needs, but we are, in other ways, very different communities with different needs. And I felt like they had towns that more closely resembled our kind of weird, somewhat frustrating rural slash bedroom split.
Like that.
And I don't know if you know, but I believe Weston and Sampson works with our sewer commission? With their, with their sewer?
Is it Weston and Sampson or is it Woodward and Curran?
I thought it was Weston and Sampson.
It might be.
Okay.
I liked Over/Under's thoughts, whether or not we went that route. I liked that they brought up the thoughts about things like maybe the master plan documents should be phone-readable, not hard copy, like, that maybe it should be optimized for handheld device reading rather than laptop or hard copy reading, given the way people. If we're, if this is a document that people are supposed to be familiar with within the community, I like the idea of making it accessible to them in a way they're more likely to review it. Whether or not it went that way in the end, I liked that they had that thought process going in.
I agree, they mentioned that with the Photoshop as well, which I thought was impressive, they had mockups. I forget what town it was, but even that, yeah, and it was like, even that little bit was like, because I'm a visual person, like, that was like, wow, like, look at how easy that was for them, while I'm sure it wasn't easy. But I think that would be impressive and also would draw in a larger audience to the master plan, to have more options than just one way of viewing it.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I, the Over/Under was the only one that I saw that had photos of our town in their presentation.
I think that's right, yeah.
Yep.
From our town, they had to game out. So I came in with the favorite, and I left with a different favorite.
Agreed.
Are we not supposed to rig these so that they work out to our favorite?
I would, no, I would try and rank them in a way that's reflective of, of what you saw between what you've read and what you experienced in the interview process.
Don't overthink it.
Yeah, it's, it, this is, Matt's going to jump out of his chair and throttle me. It's not as fiddly and objective and coded as Ones and Zeros Computer Program as one might try to make it out to be.
I can be comfy with soft rubrics as well, that's fine.
It, it is a much softer, yes, rubric. It's, again, there's, there's a subjectiveness to it, it's not wholly objective. Because you're determining what in there makes it advantageous? And do you feel that they've done this thing that makes it advantageous or highly advantageous or not advantageous or unacceptable?
So I guess to that, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that I have a strong recollection of any of the three demonstrating any strength of ability to meet the budget.
I mean, that would be within the, the written, and I mean, they, you know, I think some of that also is, that ability to meet the budget is going to come through in, in their, their budget proposal, which you don't see.
So we're, we're just wait, working off our limited inform, well, I get it, if someone were coming in and saying, we're going to devote 10,000 people to figuring out your need.
Yeah, you might look at it and say, well, huh. You know, I mean, you can look at them and say, oh, well, they've, clearly they're, they're looking at a scale and, and scope that seems to be equivalent to what we would expect to be able to afford on our budget.
You're probably not supposed to leave blanks either, huh?
I don't remember their year counts to save my gosh darn life.
Remember what?
They, they all had over 15 years of combined experience.
That, that's why I thought, so I'm looking at the depth of experience and the number wise, they all made it. It's a question of, do we, do we personally feel like it is a mu, that they were working with municipalities on projects of sim, eh, no, even that, okay.
Oh, within the last five years?
Oh, no, no, that, so I'm looking at going at the, or my, my thought was consulting with municipalities on projects of similar skies, size and scope. I was thinking municipalities of similar skies and scope, size and scope. Size and sc, skies and scope, whatever.
They're often quite related, I would think.
But.
Honestly, they all seem big enough that that category kind of feels like a wash, to me.
I, I don't disagree.
Yeah. And I think on the same thing, like, none of them are going to put things in here for us where they missed budget or deadlines, or things like that. So like, I don't, I don't know what to do with category E either.
They're not that transparent.
I'm just going to mark those as A, because I don't know.
What'd I miss?
A whole bunch of silence. Well, actually, no, we, you missed the, the obvious statement that nobody's going to tell us when they were on, over budget or when they missed deadlines.
And all of that comes out in references, too. Not that anyone would give references that would say bad things about them, but.
12, 15, 18, 47, 9, 11, 14. 12, 16, 19, okay. Have to break them down into numbers to make it make sense to me.
You're making me nervous, I was like, did I miss something?
No, just like a four, three, two, and one. Do you want this?
Yes, please.
Got it filled in?
Can you put your name on it, please?
Oh.
You don't get credit if you don't put your name on it, Matthew.
I usually just lost points.
Maybe I did that right.
I love it, it looks like they say ha, ha, ha all over them.
Or ha.
Ah. All right, so it looks like we have a clear choice. I will work with the assistant town manager on Wednesday to start doing the reference checks and identify price proposals, and we'll move forward from there.
Great.
Sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Adam.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you for the ping to make sure, remember to review that section in depth.
You're welcome.
So we've gotten into number six, comprehensive permit application.
Yeah, I think we're sort of in stasis on that, so I don't have a, an update on that. I think I'll probably remove it as its own item and just leave it as an ongoing item going forward.
In director's items?
Uh, well, no, in ongoing items.
Oh, flip the page.
See, we're using the back of the page, just like you want us to.
There you go, just like we do.
Oh, that's what I'm, huh, 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 very smart.
Board discussions, solar bylaw.
Were we supposed to get additional documentation or something?
I have not received anything additional from Ms. Mann.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can, I'll reach out to her.
Sure.
And I don't think you need to have a discussion on it tonight, I think she's looking for the, it to be on the board's radar and we can,
Sure.
I'll reach out to her, get additional documentation, and we'll go from there. And I will say, I don't have anything on driveways and entrances for you. And I will say, "I don't have anything on driveways and entrances for you." I've got a lot of bits and pieces that I've been noodling with and I just keep getting pulled in different directions, so I haven't put anything together for you, but I, I'm, I am working on it.
Okay, fair enough. Minutes approval. We've all been, all received our minutes and...
I plan to be abstaining, so don't look to me.
That's, I was wondering if I'm reading this good.
Just FYI.
I'll, I'll motion to approve the minutes from February 27th, 2023, as well as the minutes of February 27th, 2023 for 1325 Massachusetts Avenue.
Excellent.
Uh, I'll second that.
Super. Any further discussion about minutes approval? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. So Mr. Brenner had-
Do I say that I abstained?
Yeah, just say abstain.
Oh, abstain.
Committee reports, um, so open space, uh, we were supposed to meet, I don't remember what day it was last week, and we didn't have quorum. The Municipal Building Design Committee, uh, we were supposed to meet every other Wednes- every other Monday this month. Well, the other two that we don't meet here, but we haven't, we didn't make the previ- the first one and, um, think we're still scheduled to make the second one. So there's no report there. The Agricultural Commission, um, the, our meeting is this Thursday, but we have received a couple of talent bank forms to, um, fill in our vacancies, so that is looking, uh, good. Capital Planning Committee.
Uh, there was a meeting to approve minutes that I was not at and I've not been informed of any significant changes from there, but I will follow up and double check to be sure.
Okay, uh, they should be about done.
Should be, uh-
Yeah, I mean-
No, the, the meeting, I was, I believe, just to approve the minutes from, that hadn't, had a chance for approval yet.
And is that something that we leave on the whole year and just say no report?
We do, yeah.
Okay.
That way we don't forget to put it back on when it comes around.
There you go. Economic Development Committee.
Oh, that was me, uh, had, did not meet in February due to, uh, it being kind of the time that lots of people are gone, overlapping with break.
Good enough. Uh, Stormwater Task Force.
We have not met since the last meeting.
Very good. EMRPC?
I was unable to attend that meeting, so I don't have any notes for it.
Okay, and the Joint Transportation?
Uh, yes, we met on the 8th. Um, nothing really, um, important for Lunenburg. Um, we don't really have any open projects with them. Um, they did post that they were seeking proposals for, uh, culvert replacements, so that might be something I bring up in Stormwater Task Force in the future. Um, basically, it's a grant proposal, so...
Yeah, I think that the DPW Director is aware of that and has been pursuing-
Perfect.
-appropriate ones.
That's it. Took my job from me. No problem.
Speaking of culverts, um, it's been a while since we've mentioned Holman Street Bridge, so, um...
You just love to kick the hornet's nest, don't you?
I do. Why not? You know, everybody doesn't feel the same way, you know? There could be a vocal group of people who don't want it fixed and there could be a non-vocal group of people who do want it fixed.
Fair enough.
Sure. So I get to speak with the non-vocal group of people and, um, also logistically, I think it would, uh, tend to alleviate some of the congestion at the Northfield Route 13 interchange.
Mm-hmm.
So, so this is just a couple of things that, that this body should be looking at, some things like that, right? Anyways, I did notice that there was a, a grant propos- a, a grant opening for, I don't know if, I, I, I'll, I'll see if I can remember to forward it to you tomorrow, Adam, um, but it was something similar to that. And I'm not sure that, if that's actually a culvert or a bridge, because the, the bridge that I thought was always a bridge at Lake Shirley is apparently a culvert.
I think this is a larger span than the one at Lake Shirley. I think that, I think it is a culvert now and probably should be a bridge. Because it, it is, it, there's a, there is a pipe in there, but it's like a 48 or 60 inch pipe.
Isn't it, isn't it an arch? Open bottom? I'm pretty sure it's open bottom.
I don't know. It looks like it's HDPE covered in stones.
Probably been there so long it just looks open bottom, it's filled in.
Yeah, and, and so, I, I don't know. Um, my understanding is there might be some, um, horizontal curve issues with just replacing it in kind and there may need to be some, uh, significant design work. I, again, this is all-
Are we talking about Holman?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, no, I'm, I'm well aware of the, uh, the neighbor there, his comments on it.
Yeah, and I mean, I, it's been closed as long as I've been around. And I don't know what the long-term status of, of any ability to really reopen it is and whether or not there's a desire from, I'll say, town leadership.
Well, when you make the right comments to the right people, then oftentimes, things come up that hadn't come up before. I mean, that is the mulpus, Brooke, and, um, it is an impaired body. And that bridge being closed creates two dead ends where people congregate, they, they throw trash, they dump oil, they do whatever they want, so my, and my second recommendation, well, the, the second reason that I would recommend looking into it is that, to the, the water quality of the mulpus. Anyways, that's just, was on top of my head at MJTC. So, directors' items, Lunenburg Central.
So Lunenburg Central, uh, has completed the construction of the shell of their building and the pertinent site facilities, so the, uh, stormwater facilities are in, the sound wall has been constructed, the sound berm at the rear has been constructed and is being stabilized. Uh, all of the parking lots are in and paved, the road has been widened, the, uh, left turn lane has been striped, all of that fun stuff. Uh, and they are now in receipt of a temporary CO. And it's temporary because the building is one giant open space. There's no walls or bathrooms or anything in there, uh, and they're negotiating leases with potential tenants. And the tenants will do individual fit-outs and they have found that because of each individual potential tenant's needs, anything that they built in there was probably going to get demolished and rebuilt to meet bathroom needs or otherwise. So they put all of the main facilities in and then, uh, I guess there's no school tomorrow. Uh, they put all the main facilities in and then the tenants do fit-outs for the areas that they lease. So we'll probably see in the next few months tenants start to come through doing fit-outs, uh, potentially with that being operational by summertime.
Now, my understanding, when I've asked before, that it was gonna all be Target.
I have never heard the developer indicate that it will be anybody. They've said they are, they, my understanding was they had three-quarter to a dozen different potential tenants and none of the tenants were willing to sign leases until there was a predictable date for occupation. And that was, that being a predictable date is when the developer has a temporary CO, because they know what their tenant fit-out timeline is. And until they are ready to do that, they don't have any, any predictability. Uh, I had heard the same thing. Uh, I had heard it tertiaryly from the Coconut Telegraph, not anything, any-
Good, because I thought that I heard it from you and I didn't wanna challenge you-
Nope.
-in the meeting, but-
I, I've, I've heard people say that. I-
Okay.
I have never heard a definitive, um, tenant.
So then we're just a bunch of grapes. Okay. We don't know.
We all know the town meeting warrant closes on Monday, 4:00 PM. Uh, town caucus is two weeks from this evening, 7:00 PM at the middle high school. Uh, and one item that's not on here is that Marjorie will be retiring.
Oh.
No.
So as of June, we will no longer have her dedicated services.
As of June?
That is sad for us and wonderful for her.
Yes, well deserved.
Yes, no doubt. Um, you will be missed, Marjorie, but not until you're gone, so.
Jumping back real quick, the, uh, Holman, um, bridge or culvert, I will dig around. I know a few years back, I did some kind of work about like definitionally, like where do you use bridges? Where do you use culverts? I will see if I can dig that up and see if that's any useful information for us.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, all board meetings, blah, 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 um, so we have public, board meeting, public hearings, March 27th, we have three public hearings?
Two.
Two?
They are both public hearings for the reoccupation of existing buildings. So these are site plan approvals for change of use of existing buildings or special permits for use issued to, uh, existing buildings. So unlike new buildings, there's limited amounts of information that will be submitted because they are, all the facilities are constructed.
Okay, so basically we're just looking at parking and occupancy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we should be able to wrap that up and, um, well, I guess basically now-
The board had discussed potentially meeting at 5:00, potentially limiting their meeting to an hour or, or something of that nature.
Uh, with two public hearings, it would be difficult to change the time, wouldn't it? With the attendance? Especially if they're published, if they're noticed, we can't change.
I didn't even think of that.
So we can't change the date, I mean, the time, um, but we can come and we can forget about caucus and then you can just go get your pa- go get papers and get your signatures.
Sure.
That's one option. Uh, it's been quite a while since I've been to caucus because they typically do schedule it on our planning meeting. It's an interesting thing. It's, it's, we're fairly unique, I guess, and so it's, it's, it's an experience. So, uh, I would encourage anybody that's interested in getting involved in con- con-politics or even if you're not interested in getting involved, you just wanna see the wackos that are, that's the perfect place to go.
Well, Mr. Chair, you could have your meeting at an earlier time and take care of your other business.
I get you, yep.
And then at 6:05, launch right into those two public hearings. Um, you will have the matter of the bonds, et cetera. Um, so you, you would have work that could be done, that you could do committee reports, you could do minutes, you could do all of this fun and exciting municipal government that we do, uh, prior to those public hearings and then execute those public hearings and go from there.
We could do that, yep.
Again, that's all predicated on the rest of the board being available.
Yeah, I can, I can do an early start.
Yeah, I can too.
No problem.
So how early can we start?
Is, do you think 5:00 is enough time? An additional hour?
I don't, I don't commute, so, um, I'm, I'm not time constrained.
I'd rather not start before 5:00 in the morning, but otherwise I'm game, so.
5:00 PM.
Five would be, uh, about the earliest I could start.
Okay. So do we wanna try 5:30? Give you flexibility and give, give you room, um, and, and I, I don't think that we have more than an hour worth of, well, let me see, we've been here less than two hours tonight and we had a decent amount of stuff, so.
I think that'll be fine, 5:30.
Hold on, there's a 5:00 in the morning?
Don't you have children? You don't know there's a 5:00 in the morning?
I'm a heavy sleeper.
Wow.
I used to be.
Sometimes I wake up with a little face staring at me like, "Can I go downstairs now?" Yes.
Yeah, but it's called 6:00 AM now.
So we're going for 5:30, 5:15?
Uh, it, as, as early as everybody wants to start is fine with me. If, if 5:30 is enough time to get all our stuff in, then that's great.
So the earlier we start, the longer we may have to wait for the public hearings is the only thing I'm concerned about. I don't think that we've got more than a half hour of, of administrivia to deal with.
Okay, 5:30 is fine.
Yeah, okay.
We'll just talk fast if we-
I mean, I'm flexible. Like I said, it doesn't make much difference to me. So we wanna try, start at 5:30. Okay, and we don't need to make any kind of a mention that we wanna be done in time to get to the caucus, right?
I think you'll be all right.
Very good.
Hopefully.
So we've got-
I don't know, it's just in the drawer.
That's great.
Everyone always tries to sign plans with it and like-
Yeah, it's not work.
Uh, it, it does work, it's just really, really odd. Oh, does it not work anymore?
No, nothing.
Yeah, I couldn't get, get out of it.
Ongoing items, do we have anything that we wanna touch on?
We don't.
So the MBTA communities?
Uh, yes, I'm, so we've submitted all of our stuff to them. We're waiting for their certification that they've accepted it. I got an email from them, so I know that I have, they at least have my contact information, which means they received it. They're moving through the 175 communities currently, so we're on that list. I would expect sometime this month to hear from them, uh, and then I'll work with, uh, Karen Chapman to take our next steps.
So 175 communities are in that?
Yeah.
Out of 351 in the state?
Yep.
Wow. I was feeling bad for Townsend, but apparently Townsend is not the only one that got stiffed on that one.
Stiffed in what way? Having to comply?
Well, that's more than half. Do we really have rail service in more than half of our towns?
Well, it's rail, it's, it's in or adjacent to.
Yeah.
So we don't have rail service in Lunenburg.
Well, we do have rails going through our town.
True.
Townsend doesn't.
Yeah, but they're next to Fitchburg.
Anyways, love the state.
We live for the government, we're here to help.
So I guess, uh, in fact, well, if you say there's nothing, then there's nothing there. Public comment, we, we have one member on one-
You do?
Oh, not member, person.
We have a, a constituent.
We have a phone number is, uh, we're at the public comment stage, so if, uh, there's nobody in the room besides us, so if anybody online has a public comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Dave Rogers, 82 Highland Street. I was wondering if, um, you could, uh, explain, um, the, the process, uh, going forward for, you've selected, uh, a, a company to, um, work with and what, what are the steps, uh, in sequence after, uh, after that or going forward?
I will pass that off to Adam.
So we will, excuse me, determine that, uh, their price proposal is within the allotted budget. Then we will notify them that they are the selected firm, negotiated contract, and from there they will meet with the board and discuss the steps for moving forward with public participation and initiating the planning process.
Okay, um, can you, uh, give us a thumbnail sketch as to what it is, uh, we will be receiving? Uh, what, what, what's the makeup? Is it a, uh, uh, you know, I imagine it's a pretty significant report, but just give us the scope as to what, what will be, uh, uh, submitted by the, the firm.
So at the end of the process, we'll have a complete master plan- So at the end of the process, we'll have a complete master plan, which will include goals and visioning, housing element, economic development, transportation, public services and facilities, natural and cultural resources, open space. I'm missing a couple here.
Is it seven or nine?
There's eight. I think there's an energy and climate change or, or something around that. Economic development, did I say economic development? So there's an eight-element plan, I can, I can pull up all, all eight of them.
And this, this will be in the form of a, a pretty significant report, I would imagine.
Correct, it will be a report, and it will have an implementation plan. Additionally, as part of our proposal, we asked, or our RFP, we asked for a review of the town zoning bylaws and recommendations on changes that would assist in, in achieving the goals outlined in the master plan. So from there, the, after that two-year planning process, I would expect that the planning board would put together an implementation plan and possibly form an implementation committee to start shepherding the, the objectives of the master plan forward.
At, at what particular point does this come before the voters? At, at a town meeting?
Yes, it would come, it would be presented at a town meeting. The, the target would be annual town meeting of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, and before that, there, I presume that there would be meetings to explain what has been done and to kind of hone in on, on exactly what the outcome of this master plan would be.
Well, the whole intent of the plan is public participation, so that the planning board is putting together a document that represents as many of the residents of the town as they can get to participate, because the more people who participate and, and provide input, the more stable and predictable the plan is, and the more likely it is to yield results that are accepted by the powers that be, town meeting and/or the voters.
Yep, okay. I, I don't remember what firms referenced these two towns, but the, the town of Hamilton and the town of Wenham was referenced as communities that were showcased in, in the portfolio of, of two of the, of the, the firms. I'm, I'm familiar with both of them, and they're, they're wonderful communities. And I wondered if you could, the committee could make sure that, that we find out what, what kind of work had been done in Hamilton and, in Wenham, and maybe extrapolate from that what we might be looking for that they could do for the town of Lunenburg.
Sure. What kind of a process, this is, this is six months to a year process?
Eighteen to twenty-four.
Okay, so this is, this is a year and a half to two-year process, so we're, we're gonna have a whole bunch of public outreach, and this basically is, is a roadmap, a planned roadmap for the next ten years, because planning board is, is charged with doing this every ten years. We're a little bit late, but, but this is, this is in order for us to be proactive for the next ten years instead of reactive every time something happens.
Sure, sure. Well, I, I just mentioned those two towns because they, I think they're, they're very nice communities, and maybe we could find out what, what kind of work was done, and maybe we could cherry pick some things from that. Anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to second guess anybody here, but when I saw those two towns, I was, I was happy because they, they're great towns. I think that's all I have, and it looks like we're gonna have a very ambitious schedule for two years, and it'll be interesting to see how we do that. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank each and every one of you for the countless hours that you donate and contribute to the town in, in various and sundry aspects of, of your charges. And this is a big project, so I would, I'll look forward to following it. The last thing I'd like to make a comment is, I heard about Marjorie retiring, and I certainly, as a citizen, realize what a wonderful person she is, number one, and the contribution that she makes. And I, I sure, I, I am sure that I speak for, for everybody when I say we wish her the very, very best of, of retirement, and want to thank her for all that she's done for the town of Lunenburgans people. That's it. Thank you so much, and if any of you would like to assist in doing some snow shoveling at eighty-two Highland Street, you can fill out a, a entry form, and, and we will interview first thing tomorrow morning. So remember that when the, when the snow is flying.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Rogers, and I'll be sure to mention your talent bank forms.
Okay, good. Thank, thank you so much. Bye-bye.
All right, any more public comment? Any board comment concerns?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
But before I diatribe, I was curious, because I did miss the past two meetings, unavoidable family things. Was Mr. Torgerson at either of those meetings? I didn't catch that when I reviewed them on YouTube, but I wanted to verify.
Nope.
When was the last time Mr. Torgerson was, I, I don't really, I'm not gonna really beat around the bush. When's the last time Mr. Torgerson was at one of our meetings?
I don't know. He was appointed in twenty twenty with you, and elected.
I, I know he, he was coming to meetings when I was sick with cancer, and I deeply appreciate it for that, for keeping the board running. That's my understanding that was happening anyway. We overlapped when I was back about a year ago, for, a little less than a year ago, for a couple meetings. I've seen him online a couple times since, usually with no feedback. Am I, please let me know if I'm misrepresenting the scenario.
No.
I recall some time back, the board sent a letter to Mr. Torgerson, asking if he was intending to participate as a member of this board, and I guess I would ask, I would say, I would state that I think it's important that boards be made of people who actually show up and do the dang job we've been elected to do. And, and I say that as someone who unfortunately may be going on another medical leave, and we can address that as a board if we get there. Is there a process for getting people off this board if they are not participating, and getting people on this board who would participate?
You would need to do a recall election, or the individual would need to choose to resign.
What is involved in a recall election?
It's outlined in the charter. I did do the research a couple of years ago when the board requested. There's a certain number of signatures that need to be ratified by the town clerk, and then moved forward to, I think, the select board. And I think if you do it within a certain amount of time prior to an upcoming election, it can be included on that ballot. I can, I can put together another memo for the board if you'd like.
Okay.
I, I'm not looking to kick, no, that's not true, I'm not gonna lie, that's not true. I'm perfectly happy kicking this hornet's nest, and, and I don't really mean it with any disrespect, because I, I do know Mr. Torgerson has a, if, a new child and everything else, but I would like to see the board not potentially be crippled if two of us come down and can't participate. That's not fair to the voters, that is not fair to everyone trying to do business in this town, and, and it's not even fair to our town image as being run by professionals who care about civic responsibility.
And it's certainly not fair for, there may be one person out there that wants this position, but. Yes, no, I, 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 I share your sentiment. I, I think, I, it would, it would behoove us to make requests for him to do the very simple thing of resigning, rather than getting all worked up and doing us whatever. Yeah. Or we can just wait it out. He's, he expires in two, twenty-four? I think, yeah, so. Duly noted. Thank you for the, for the comment.
Thank you.
And certainly, if you've got more, that, do you have more?
Oh, no, that, that's, that, that's the biggie, other than, yeah, unsurprising medical issues may pull me away, they may not. We're gonna find out later this, about, within the next week or so.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting us know. All right, anything else? Anybody? No? All right, well, I guess we're at that point where we could motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion about adjourning? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, folks. Have a good evening. And we have Mylar. Is that, is that it?